And so there's that if there's somebody in the room who is willing to agree to donate their time to you, you can have six minutes. But you don't get to have one person donate to you and then do the same with them. That's not the way it works. Um, so think a little bit about how you how you do that. There's, there's one thing I want to really mention because I, I know that this issue or the issues surrounding e-bikes and multimodal transportation. I don't want to single, we are talking about e-bikes tonight, but this is an issue that goes beyond e-bikes. And, and I want to encourage people not to disparage other people in the community. To disparage how they get themselves transported around the city. I don't really think it's not very helpful to do that. We don't, we really discourage people from clapping or hooting or whatever. It's hard enough to speak in front of the group. It's really hard when people are making noise and all that kind of stuff. So if you would, please keep that in mind. I've found that younger people are a lot more easily convinced of that than sometimes adults are. So that's probably not really going to be helpful. One of the other things that I would suggest, you don't have to do this, but it's really important, I think, to try to get a handle and suggest that. So these are just sort of some suggestions if you want to make comments is what? What is the problem? If any, that needs to be addressed? Some people will say there is a problem. Some people say the problem to e-bikes, some people will say on some e-bikes, some people say it's really the relationship. It's really the, you know, oh, it's really the roads. It's really the signs. There's all kinds of ways to define the problems. But what we do as council members is we're problem solvers. We want to be able to say, gee, we know what it is we're trying to do before we go out and try to solve something. Because it may not be the right solution. And we heard from the folks that just spoke that they have already sort of talked a little bit about different ways of thinking about the problem. You're welcome to talk about things that are really good about it too. Because quite frankly, if our police department is buying them and if everybody is buying them, and I could tell you there's a lot of people behind them, I wouldn't try that. Some over the weekend actually for this survey anticipated this. Um, there's something that's really positive to be, to be gained. And I, I think in the effort to point fingers at each other, sometimes we, we miss that. And you know, these, once you define the problem, then sometimes we can get at some solutions that work. And there may be multiple problems, there may be multiple solutions. So, um, how, how we do this is going to be multi variant. I just wanted to say this stuff in the outset because I want to try to do this in a really ordered way. It's going to be hard for people to say what they want to say in three minutes. But I think we're going to get it back then after where we get some clarity from, from the speakers from the council. After the public comment is over, let everybody speak. Just let, I think you could probably raise your hand and want to speak. We'll recognize you, you can come up. And I don't think we have any. And then after we get done with that, then council will talk about questions in for the questions they have. We can discuss amongst ourselves what we think that we're trying to say. I'm sorry for talking about this stuff. So I'm going to want to make sure that you kind of get straight because this is tough stuff, really is. And I recognize that there's confusion. Probably a little bit better. But the problem is what's, so that, why don't I ask council members, do you have any, oh, the other thing is, when you speak, I'll recognize you and then you can speak. And when finished, we'll get the next person. That's true for council members too. So, council members, do you have questions? Yes.
Yeah. Excellent presentation. You mentioned chief, through our context within a broader trail network that connects to neighbors. Have you looked at what's all we're doing?
To be honest with you, there are best practices at this point. I feel like we're kind of leading the charge in terms of addressing this on a kind of whole community level. On the state has regulations and I think most departments are just using the state law, the state guidelines to manage enforcement or activity within other cities and the trails. I know some communities do have specific provisions on, on the type of e-bike, some prohibited e-bikes trails in their entirety. I'm not sure even those does that. And so I think that based on the community needs and the dynamics, some communities are doing that, but it's not very, it's not very broadly done. In 2017, most of the laws were kind of enacted covering e-bike. That seemed to be where they came to be in vogue. Looking at our ordinances, they were also in 2017. And they were very well aligned with a lot of the state provisions. But again, I think now as, as it's broadened and it's become more and more popular, there are still gas in the ordinance, which is, but I'm not aware of any communities that are tightening those up at this point.
Just a request from the audience, since we're facing this with a project so that people behind us can hear.
Chief, you're good.
Thank you, sir. Other questions? Yes.
I'm, first of all, I think the presentation was wonderful. Also, from fire department chief and from the parks department. I want to emphasize that the whole reason we're discussing this is for its safety. We want to prevent accidents and how are we best going to do that? I'm really interested in the education aspect of it. Partnering with e-bike store owners to hand out, this is the law if you're riding this class button. And I like the education that's being done at parks, actually on the trail saying, no, don't do that. Helm is better on your head. And just having the, the police officers on their bikes giving direction to the bikes. It's also important, you were talking about not singling out one group of people. But there'd also be education done for the automobile drivers and pedestrians also, yes, on how to interact with an e-bike. Because a lot of, you know, automobile drivers don't have any experience, some of them even on a regular bike. So how, and let them know that yes, it's okay for them to go through a stop sign.
Great question. We are also partnering with the city communications to partner off of parks materials. They have a share the trail campaign and we're actually developing a share the road campaign. And to share the road campaign will include bicyclists, the pedestrians and the automobile drivers as well. Very similar to this, we'll use similar branding, but.
Okay, thank you.
We have two questions, but before that, I, I just have to acknowledge, Brett, chief, the work, excellent work that your team does in the community. You, you mentioned education earlier and being an ally, especially to the youth in the community. And I'll give you an example, my nine-year-old daughter says that she loves police and Melissa because there's space. And I think that says a lot. And senior officer stationed in front of the school and leading the community and leading to those walking to school. You make a difference. So I needed to acknowledge that. My two questions, one is for open space. Is there a law that limits speed on open space tracks? I ask this because I have seen people that started on Lafayette Trails. Is that state or is that a whole course?
Again, speak to kind of where they got it from. But on our trail system, we don't have a speed limit. And that's primarily due to the fact that in terms of the enforcement of that, kind of as Rangers is the primary sort of trail enforcement entity, our scope authority does not include the ability to say, pull someone over for speeding fines. But there's no real established speed limit. Most of what we focus on in terms of our education enforcement is behavior that's a little bit more context specific of was the speed that the person was using safe in the context of what the trail conditions were, what the other trail use was? And did they signal to pass? And did they, you know, observe those kind of traffic?
I mean, I think across that's the thing that might be where it is discussed further, even if you can't enforce it. Just that, oh, there's, if you're not using an e-bike, you can see it more clear in the past on the trails. I'm just wondering how there's one to discuss. My second question is returning the enforcement needs. And help me understand what enforcement will decide when there is a minor involved situation. And in particular, interest in, is there any mechanism to ensure that the adult responsibility for those behaviors are being addressed?
Yeah, so typically as, as our general practice, anytime we have somebody that's a juvenile that's going to be cited with violations or type of defense, we do contact parents with a parent guardian, usually response to the location. We can locate somebody that we typically will drive the juvenile offender to their, their parent or guardian's home. Part of that is because the state does mandatory penalty assessments if a parent is violating violation. So there's actually a specific form that we would allow. It's essentially an affidavit saying parenic knowledge is they were informed of this and that they will in these types of situations or often not as soon as they require appearance. It's probably going to just be a fines sort, but still as a matter of practice, we would not issue a, somebody under the age of 16, a citation. You know, an unlicensed driver, basically, a child, a ticket with that moving. Probably have it immediately. Now for somebody to have from 16 to 18 licensed driver, again, if it's a, if it's not requiring an appearance, mandatory appearance, we can issue a citation in the rules at that point because they do have a driver's license, or we can tie the violation to the driver's.
All right, so that's the presentations. What if there's education? Is the use of that part?
No, that probably wouldn't always be the case. So it would be, it would be a very limited detention of the child, juvenile to explain the reason for the contact. We provide that educational component, that educational opportunity, but more than likely just. So if we're not going to issue a citation or something to them, we would limit that contact to shorts.
Okay, and that's not documented or is that documented?
It's documented, they have reports, they're going to make contact. The officer will call the track violation, they'll make the contact, they'll make the notations in the computer dispatch screen. And then that information is captured. If we're not issued.
The minors?
No, no, just the contact information, we wouldn't necessarily put minors information in there. But the other thing that we're required to use is provide a business card on any contact where we don't issue a citation. So we're required to identify ourselves, we're required to also capture that information application on citizen contact. And that's mandated by the state. So all of those contacts are documented in multiple places. More importantly, the business card and it as a matter of practice, you know, we hand the card to the juvenile and we tell the parents questions. How does, so you know, it could be an additional step where we say, what's your phone number? Maybe make a phone call later on or ask a parent to call us back with that business card. And that could be a process thing that could be implemented, but as a matter of practice, if it's just a contact, some education, we just.
That's really helpful.
I'll just repeat, it was really good, great information right before I came, but thank you for even diving deeper. I actually, several of the questions were also answered or asked by Councilor Hellington, so thank you for saving me some trouble. I, I wanted to come in on speeds though, because I wanted clarification. You were mentioning that is it the only the class three bike that has the doctor that's required, correct? It doesn't have to be on the class one or two? And that's kind of what we see a lot on trails. So there is no way for somebody to know the speed that they're going, so posted speed would be almost impossible for them to even know the speed.
Well, it, well, they, they may, they may not know the speed that they're going without the speedometers. But the other part is like, how do we measure their speed as well through enforcement? Like unless an option is there with the speed measuring device, we're not going to necessarily know what the speed is either. So, um, yeah, so class ones and twos, they're governed at 20 miles per hour. So if they're at top speed, they're 20 miles an hour. So that's, that's about the only way to tell is if we're going faster than where it's at.
And there's no restriction on the speed if they're driving on, like a bike path on the road?
There's no, so like, like, like Benjamin mentioned, there's no posted speed limit on a bike trail. They're on the roadway, they do have to adhere to the speed limit that's on that particular road. On the roadway, they have to follow the same rules.
I, I actually do agree with you that, that just like even some kind of a reminder that we're going fast. I like the, the yield signs that are stuck in the direction really. I haven't seen those yet. I have seen a lot of the opposed to things in Lafayette. And I, I also agree, I think finding some consistency with our neighboring communities makes a lot of sense. Because I think people who e-bike here, kids and adults are e-biking in Superior in Lafayette, you know, in Boulder. And if there's a way for us to like work together instead of, we put this whole cohesive thing, spent a lot of money on signage to find out that, oh, older is going to implement something else in three months. It's totally different than ours. Maybe there is a way, I don't know. I mean, maybe it doesn't apply to the streets, just trail things to, for that level of consistency. Scott, you mentioned that you guys in 22 were doing outreach to the elementary schools. Do you currently extend that to the middle school and high school as well for information on safety with e-bikes?
We have not. It's absolutely something that we can do. The, the response that we did with the elementary schools or the communications that we had was in response to the accident. With the two elementary students, that's focused our, our communications and instructions.
And because I was just saying, like I recently, I've heard a lot of public comment and it seems to surround e-bike usage around the middle school. So that's why I.
The, the Girl Scouts group that working with this actually students. That is the focus of that relationship.
And just something at the high school. And with BDSM, is there a way to communicate not just with the kids, although I, I completely love that, but also to get maybe some information to their parents at the same time? Because it's a good way I think to reach them without doing just mailer.
The, the contacts that we had into this system was through the executive secretary within the school. And it's, and we rely on that at that point to disseminate that information that they see best. So I can suggest those things.
Yeah, we, we have a pretty good relationship with the direct of security, Brandon Sullivan at BDSM. So I don't know, I don't think he would have an issue with this enable, push out some information. It's, it's a safety related message and I don't think he would have an issue with that. And to your point, council member, that's your point. It, one of the, one of the action items that I've noted is, is reaching out to neighboring communities to see what they are doing, how they're approaching this. If they're even aware that this is an issue or how they're, they're looking through it, trying to agree some of that consistency. You know, especially within our regions, more than that. And maybe if we decide to relax and changes, we can always be better. So thank you for that suggestion.
And I, I think the mayor actually touched on something really great. If it's possible to get age information on people involved in any of the accidents to see, you know, should we do more information for drivers of vehicles to cover what Faye's point? And maybe that are under the age of 18, if that seems to be an area, like they're newer drivers, they're still really learning. It's harder for them to navigate a busy thing. I mean, I literally yesterday had an e-bike cyclist go past me as I was entering the roadway. And they just went sipping along the sidewalk as if there was not a road that they were crossing. So that there's, I mean, they didn't have a stop sign. So it's, but I was literally sitting there waiting to make my right-hand turn. And all of a sudden, out of my permission, this kid just comes flying along the sidewalk incredibly. And I was just glad I headed along that there was a car that I was waiting for. If not, it might've been, I was turning right. And that they were there. And that's the kind of thing I think that we're all trying to find a way to prevent. It's not, it's on the driver, it's also on the cyclist. If, if there's a way to stop those, I don't know if there is, but I think maybe education in that respect. Lastly, thank you for doing the engagement, especially at these big events. I love the fact that you're doing police on bikes. Because I agree, I think when you guys are out there every day talking with kids and adults, it just personalizes the process and makes us realize it's all about helping each other, not about somebody doing something terrible. Thank you.
Yeah, I did make a notation of age and injury. And then I do, I do think the state does a really good job with the graduated driver's license program. So they do reach out to kids at that age 15 and onward. So I almost have a wonderful need to determine what, what age group or range might most benefit from some of these educational opportunities. And then continue to reinforce it as they get the drivers. Moving into the driver's part of the road.
Is e-bike training, like from a driving perspective, part of the new driving courses or education the kids have to hold?
E-bikes, that was.
Other council questions, yes. If you can just run through the helmet laws. You know, obviously automobile drivers are not required with helmets. Pedestrians are not. What fiker you said under 18, so can you give me a sense of, forget about e-bikes for a second, just what bicyclists have to wear a helmet?
So there is no bicycle helmet law in the state.
Motorcyclists? Nothing. But specifically in the state, there's a e-bike under 18, class three rule.
Yes, yeah, so it's, it's for riders that are between the ages of 16 and 18. So I'll give you this information.
While he's looking for that, add to that, you only save your requirement from care for motorcycle, but that's not required.
Interesting. And then another age specific ones, you got 16 to 18. Because under 16, they can't even operate other three, which is not silly. It's not about 14-year-olds, nobody knows what's said. You can only be 16 and up to ride it. And then for the first two years, you'd have to wear a helmet. And then, and then you point out that rule that you can roll, if you will, through a stop sign as long as you're over 14. So it's like two pieces there, which I imagine for police, I'm just guessing is a almost impossible enforcement. You're looking like, is 13 and a half? Or 10, like so, pretty difficult.
Yeah, I think that becomes very difficult. So yes, just to clarify, anybody under 16 cannot operate or ride, cannot ride as a passenger in class three unless it's designed to accommodate. I think that may be a provision like parents and kids. But then helmets are only required in class three for riders under the age of 18.
Is that where you get them?
And you're, yeah, yes. It is very difficult. And I think most of the times when we have enforcement or contact, is maybe if they fell off the bike and it was an accident and then we're actually in contact and how we know this, what your age is, looking at the bicycle, because they're all noted with classification. That's, that's where we would be able to visually tell the difference. I don't know that I could look at a bike and say, well, that's a one, that's a two, and that's a three, especially as this all.
So this is not meant to be a gotcha question. I just know you probably don't have this information at your fingertips. But like, do you have any knowledge of any bicyclists being cited without any running into something, but like for, you know, failing to yield a stop, for not wearing a helmet for the right age or for riding a, a level three when they're old enough? Do, do you have any knowledge of us really ever citing anyone for that sort of logistical?
No, well, I don't have any information or knowledge to be cited. Anybody I do know that wants to put that information in the department, asking for, you know, e-bike related incidents, so let's start tracking those. So we have the data to be able to pull that out. I did have several options come up to me and say, yeah, I've stopped, you know, I stopped a few people who were, for running through a stop sign. Not even the Colorado. So those are all educational opportunities and they talked about that. You still have to, you know, you still have to slow and make sure that it's clear. The idea being to keep you safe. At my knowledge, I have that, I can sort of look to see through our system if we do have any citations issued to anyone with ripe e-bike.
Yeah, I mean, interesting, anecdotally, that, that is not something we're out there doing, you know, regularly. And then, you know, as far as the speeds, uh, do like, do the police e-bikes have governors on them? Or are you able to get those up to higher speeds?
So, no, I understand anything. We haven't purchased any yet.
Okay.
We applied for some grant funding to support that program. But I don't believe that they have any ability to go faster with your, you buy a class three, it's governed at 20 miles an hour. So again, that would be something that would be considered if they were prohibited in certain areas. It can be a part of for police or emergency services, bicyclists to get a class three on the trail to go, you know, do your job. But yeah, but yeah, I don't know that, that there's any ability to customize motor or their capabilities. But that could, that's for the research, I think that I.
Well, it's, it's pretty rare, but you can also build an electric bike yourself, right? You don't have to go buy one at the store. Potentially, yes. He's, he's 14 and he built himself an electric cart that actually works. So the motor turns the wheel. And, but like anyways, I know that it's possible for humans to build their own electric bikes that wouldn't have the governors. Just curious how like that plays in it all, you know, again, similar, similar world, you know, you want your police cars that be able to operate similar to other cars that you want your police bikes to operate some other bikes potentially. But again, this is anecdotal, but I've been told that, you know, there are 14, there are 14, 14-year-olds out there whose friends bikes 40 miles an hour. Like, do they? Like, oh yeah, I mean, the, the speed limit things, the, the signs clock them at 45, 50 miles an hour. So I don't know where they got the bike or how they did it, or if they got it from the governor. But like we have anecdotal, I do not have this as a fact. Stories of e-bikes traveling at really high speeds. And I know, again, we have a, you might guys will have a chance to talk later. But again, do you have experience or knowledge of, of those moments that are more than my anecdotal, you know, neighbors telling me stuff?
I don't, I've heard, I've heard similar stories. I've sent emails to similar speed estimations and I don't know if it's accurate or not. I mean, if it's, it's on a speed, speed limit sign that measures the speed, it probably is accurate. I don't know how often it was calibrated, but you know, it's again, it's, it's, we have devices measuring a certain speed. I would tend to believe that it's probably pretty close to that, but I don't have any specifics to. If that, if that's possible, if that's, yeah, if it's capturing a vehicle, maybe riding, they're driving next to it. The vehicle's speed or sport downhill or.
Right, right, yes. Okay. And then one of the things you guys listed, you had, you know, registration, regulation, engineering, other, these questions you, you know, proposed that we maybe talked about. What, how does registration play in at all? I think of registration kind of being like paying for something, you know, you're kind of, you, whatever. Or, or if it gets lost, it's registered. How does the registration play in at all to the three Ds? I just don't get it.
So I, I think where it could come in, number one, it's a crime prevention recommendation on our part because it helps with tracking. It's lost or stolen. But the other part is if the city decides, hey, we want to license, potentially put a provision in order to obtain this license from the city, you have to show some proof of, you know, that you understand the operations, you've been oriented, you've been trained or something to that effect. You know, so it could be, it could be components of, of education as well. It says, hey, I'm registered, which means I've been.
So the individual, not necessarily the bike, but I could be, well, maybe not licensed, but certified or registered. So the individual, not necessarily the bike, but I could be, well, maybe not licensed, but certified or registered. It's about more than just the piece of equipment.
I mean, it could be, it could be, it could be however we decide to kind of create that. Yeah, it could be an individual. If you say, hey, I own three e-bikes, here's, I'm showing you that I went to some e-bike training, I know how to operate, there's certain rules, regulations, laws. Now, any e-bike that you own, from a crime prevention perspective, we would recommend you register. But you're also satisfying potentially what the city would like in terms of satisfying that educational requirement, which currently there is.
My last question just is, I don't know, from a policing standpoint, like the where do we draw the line between a motorcycle, which I believe is short for motorized bicycle, and a e-bike, which is a motorized electric bicycle, and where, where, where is that line drawn? Like, oh, no, no, that's, is it gas power versus electric? Like, that doesn't really, like, I don't understand how we've separated a motorcycle from electric, motorized bicycle.
Yeah, so per the state definition, the, the, the motor that's on the e-bike is anywhere between two hundred and fifty watt motors. That's how it's classified and categorized in the state statute. So if it's outside of those provisions, then, then technically it may not be an allowable vehicle on the road, depending on what other, other violations or, or other, you know, specifications in there. So for the purpose of this discussion, that's what the distinction.
Two fifty to seven?
Yes.
I think do pedals play into it too? Yeah.
Well, yeah, so the, the definition is like, it's, it's two wheels, it's pedalless, pedal assisted, or a pedal bicycle with a motorized assistance, with an engine of two fifty watts.
Actually, when you were talking about the passive radar that checking speed, I think, I mean, they're solar powered, and so they, they do, that might be the one way that people would know the speed they're going. If it was a little sign, if it's like, you know, fifteen miles an hour, thirteen, whatever speed we wanted, and it flashed up and told you, you'd be like, didn't know my, my, my bike is going that fast. It may only be a handful of people, and it may be when it's crowded, to your point, like, it's about keeping the trail safer versus enforcement of it, it's more just, like, you know, keeping it in the forefront of people's minds. I don't know, that would be something. They're not that expensive, especially if they're small.
Sometimes it's also considered a competition.
Um, I'm gonna go back really quick, just to, just to the definition of e-bike. Um, so it's a vehicle that has two or three wheels, fully operable pedals, and an electric motor not exceeding seven hundred and fifty watts power. Uh, I guess it typically is two fifties. So that's, and then it just says further, electric bicycles are, have to conform to one of the three classifications.
So I think, I think the maximum seven fifty helps me correct. The threshold.
Any other questions? I have a couple, a number of questions, uh, just so people didn't, weren't terrified of it. So parents were terrified of the word detention. That's not an arrest, right? It's just.
We're, we're restricting your movement, you're not free to go, there's a violation, reasonable suspicion that you committed a violation of some sort. So it's a temporary detention, keeping you there until we either issue a citation or issue a rule. But it's not.
Uh, some of these are just questions about information that I don't know. Do you, do you know, again, going back to those statistics, do you know if accidents were predominantly in streets, sidewalks, trains, lots of both?
I don't specifically know, but in order for us to take an accident, we're typically on the roadway. Um, accidents on private property are not mandated by the state. Um, they could be done as courtesy, but they're not always taken if it's private property. If, if there's one, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess, to clarify that, it's a definite state accident. You know, it's, it's just the internal case reporting system, police departments is to document.
Yeah, so of the fourteen eighty-five cases that we looked at, those are all the same for the state.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, it occurs to me that there's some, there's some variation in how we're keeping track. And I'd be very interested in knowing how other jurisdictions are doing some of that. Because I mean, eventually, somebody's gonna be wanting to jurisdictions, and we have to be able to at least know some of these. I don't know what measures, I believe it's, you know, some of them have been kind of suggested. At least through the questions. Um, do you have any idea how many e-bikes?
No.
I can't even take it as a guess.
Um, we may, we may have somebody who knows. And we don't have registration. We currently do have a micro registration system, but it is just the lost or stolen type of registration. And the education efforts that we're talking about, have they been primarily, they've been primarily through the schools, or?
That's just one of the, since, uh, the HOAs, the schools, community events, community conversations, top with the tops.
Has, have you all, this isn't a gotcha either, just a question, have you talked with certain groups of e-bike aficionados? I mean, are there groups, I think there are probably, there are groups of e-bikers around the state, maybe in the region, maybe in the county, whatnot. You know, my, my bet is opinions that kids, and there's natural, and there's trade associations, you know. Seldom, certainly, sure. You can cast your net a little too wide, but maybe, I, I don't know whether you've looked in any of the work done. People's attempts nationally to try to set standards or any best practice.
Yeah, so, so for rider groups, no, what we've done is, again, we're strategizing that, would you want to reach vendors at the place sale? Cause that's where it's gonna be impacted too, as people come in looking for bicycles. Um, you know, they, they're asking questions, so parents are asking questions, consumers are asking questions, and I mean, realistically, those that are selling these, they are the experts in, in what this, what this product does, what it can do, what it can't do. Um, and so I think partnering with, with that group will also kind of make some inroads with the rider group and say, hey, what, what do you see on your end? What are the things that we need to consider? Because, um, again, I think that while this is now a formalized discussion, we've been focusing on how to make things safer. And, and we're strategizing internally, but I think that we need to definitely reach out. Continue with those, those relationship gaming strategies.
Yeah, and I, I completely agree with Councilmember Fink, which you said earlier about the focus being safety. I think that's probably the focus that most people have. That ought to be its favorite piece. Couple of other things, do you? You can't race automobiles on the road under state's statute, right? Is there any provision on racing, and I'm, I'm thinking more class two e-bikes, because those. But very anecdotal information. Some of the ones that often is problematic. Um, do we have any limitations?
So the only limitations that I can think of is, it would be riding more than two abreast, riding over the street. The two primary violations that would apply if that were the case, this particular dangerous situation. Uh, like a speed contest, really specific to vehicles, it's, it's because of the excessive speed, like well beyond twenty miles an hour, you can go to, plus the weight of the vehicle. The weight causes additional need for distance to stop and all those factors. Specific to yeah, two, more than two abreast. Maintaining that speed. What are the rules about? So class one and class two are. They, they have to yield to pedestrians in certain situations, they have to call out when they're passing, so they have to let the pedestrian know how they're passing when they're coming up. Uh, but they are allowed to move on a.
You know, I've handed, if in a home room, you just have to get.
Um, we'd have to look at a little bit more, more deeply at that. I know that, again, there are, there is a provision in the state statute that allows local authorities to enact different regulations. Um, and so where it relates specifically to constitutions raised, like, a local authority can say, hey, we're gonna prohibit this classification in these areas because, because of the community needs and because of issues that they ask specifically to the listener.
Thank you for answering all those questions. Why don't we take some public comment? Cause I know people have been listening very patiently, really appreciate the patience. And I suspect that there's a lot of people who know a lot more about e-bikes, how they work, but those of us that have been talking here at the table, so. See, clerk, if you you wanna raise your hands if you're interested in public comment? Just one right back to you, two.
Is the podium good? Stand over here.
Okay.
We need the podium?
No, I just.
A waste of authority there.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Should I wait for the time, or? Okay, so I wanted to start with the clarification for your definition of a class three e-bike. Do you mind repeating your definition?
Thanks so much.
Uh, class three is a fast legal e-bike, pedal assist and throttle control, maximum speed up to twenty-eight miles per hour. Required helmet by law, no licenses required. With the motor that provides assistance, only when the rider is pedaling, it ceases to provide assistance, the bicycle reaches maximum speed. Required to have a speedometer. Persons will not ride a class three electrical bike on a bike or pedestrian path. Thank you. Um, well, the part that I want to clarify is the use for requirement of throttle on a class three bicycle. From my understanding, looking at both the Colorado General Assembly, as well as Colorado State Parks and Wildlife, they utilize a definition, uh, an electric bicycle that provides assistance only when the rider is pedaling, meaning there's no throttle. Uh, the motor ceases at twenty-eight miles per hour. And then also, again, class three bicycles must have a speedometer. And that is also used in the federal definition as well, that it must be pedal assisted only up to twenty-eight miles per hour. And it is uh, not allowed to have a throttle. And then my second point. And then I'm just gonna answer some questions that I kind of heard all of you guys ask, and where there were not much of an answer to. So, the first one was how many e-bikes were in Lewisville? I would estimate anywhere between like three to almost six thousand. Uh, just based off of our sales and just looking at what other potential online distributors can do. And then see. Oh, and then while class one and class two e-bikes do not require a speedometer, almost every single electric bike will have some sort of display that generally will have your speed being the most kind of in-your-face part of that display. Um, there's very occasional bikes that will not have a display, primarily not in bikes where you're never really gonna be going past twenty miles per hour. And then the so class two e-bikes, there's been a lot of poots in the community about them being one of the major problems. From what I've seen, just working, being a sales manager here at e-bike Colorado, class two bikes are not necessarily the problem, the way that a lot of people think, because, oh, they have a throttle, they're dangerous. The throttle is, is super useful, people have any sort of like mobility disability, if their knee hurt, you know, knee pain, hip issues. Uh, and then also, we see a lot of people that have balance issues, they're extremely common. And when trying to pedal a bike from a stop, it is sometimes difficult to get that initial balance point. And it's very common that we recommend people that have balance issues to get a bike with a throttle for that point, because it's a lot safer for them to get up to speed safely without having a chance of falling over, rather than trying to pedal and losing balance.
Three minutes.
Sweet.
Can you give us your name?
Yeah, with this. Uh, L U C A S, it's like a snogger. Thank you.
And I have notes here, cause otherwise I'd really exceed mine in three minutes. So, Mayor Lee, uh, councilmembers and staff, I'm here tonight, as for sure many of us are, uh, because we're concerned about the rapid growth of motorized bikes in town, and young people who comprise a large portion of the users. She gets her to the point, somebody's gonna get her. If some basic instruction, rules governing where to ride, um, consequences for those who fail or refuse to follow the rules are not imposed. Those of us who, um, walk around town, we drive around town, I, I walk, I ride, I bike, I have interactions with young people on these bikes all the time. Tends to be the younger people who don't have the experience in traffic, who make the poor decisions. So I'm really talking about what somebody said about like, we're talking about the behavior, not the item. It's not the bike, it's the behavior. So what do we do about that, right? And so, you know, just hiding from my own experience, um, you know, there's a real danger posed by some of these motorized bikes, um, that are used for transportation and recreation, totally get it. Um, but my husband and I have been confronted on multiple occasions, we live not far from middle school. So school gets out, we're walking the dogs, right? And we've been confronted on multiple occasions by groups of young people riding on the sidewalks all across town. And they don't move. They're like, it's, the sidewalk is theirs, and we are supposed to get out of their way, and they are also riding by at speeds that are unsafe by any standard. They're, I mean, I've literally had to take my dogs and move out of their way. And they're like, uh, they won't get in the road. So it's more, again, about the education, I think it's not the product itself. People like having, I don't, I don't disagree with that. My, my issue really is the, the behavior. These users seem to be under the impression that the bike, or the sidewalk is for their bikes. And I know that there is no, you and I have spoken, there's no ordinance saying that the, stating that the kids can't be, or that we can't be on the sidewalks with our bikes. So I think that maybe that's something that can be addressed with some bike lanes, especially on like Main Street. Crossing South Boulder, I end up, um, put in the wrong direction when I'm riding south. If I do the crosswalk, I'm sent onto the sidewalk, I can't ride on the street because I'm, I'm going, I'm gonna, gonna end up, so I have to go down in the wrong direction, which isn't the safe way for me to cross. I'd love for that intersection to be, um, to be addressed. Um, so as you've mentioned, e-bike accident rates are relatively low, but even in the absence of accidents, pedestrians, cyclists, motorists are affected by the behavior of these young people on e-bikes. Um, I'm willing to help, whatever you need, outreach, help come to things, um, whatever you need, I'd love to help um, be a part of the solution, not looking to, you know, attack anybody or say that they shouldn't have them, but I think, again, it's education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, if you're online, and I don't know if we have anybody online, just raise your hand.
I like podium. That's something to lean on. I think my wife's gonna give me my first three minutes. I am the owner of e-bike Colorado. And, uh, July first, we'll, we'll celebrate seven, seven years. Actually, it's June, it's June thirtieth at noon. That was my soft opening. So, um, we are the largest, I gotta say now, independent e-bike dealer in the state of Colorado. Because there's been some big companies like Trek, it's specialized in giant come in, they have come in and they've bought up independent bike shops. And now they're, we can't compete with a trekker specialized. I am more than happy to work with anybody in the community at any level for an awareness, um, uh, seminars, um, I would host it, I will provide pizza and sodas, I will do whatever it takes to help educate folks to do that. Our demographics at e-bike Colorado is about fifty plus. We are starting to see additional people, younger people, younger families wanting to ride, um, you know, cargo bikes so that they could have a one-year-old in a, in a, in a seat and then maybe a three-year-old also on that same seat with this, they're very, very safe that way. And, um, would hate to see that go away because of, but that's it, that is a class two with a throttle. And it, um, a class three, thank you Lucas, Lucas is my sales manager. And these folks that are with me, they're, they're experts because they study this day in and day out. Um, State Game of Fish was, um, was giving a seminar one day and, uh, at a, at a function that we were participating in. A guy saw my shirt, e-bike Colorado on there and he says, can you come up here and say a few things? And I said, sure, I want to correct you on your class three bike with a throttle. Because he had it wrong. They do not have throttles, a strong bike. This is a class three, great commuting bike, twenty eight mile an hour, but you have to pedal it to engage the motor. It does not engage with a throttle, doesn't have. The split lane law with motorcycles, you know what I'm talking about? Scares the daylights out of me because, um, I wish that they wouldn't do that. I don't want to get into that, but I think we would see some of that also with e-bikes as well. And, um, I don't think it's a safe move at all, but I'm not the governor. The, um, seven hundred and fifty watt is the, so is the maximum wattage motor for any class of bike. So you could have a class one, it's seven hundred and fifty watt, class three, that's seven hundred and fifty. We get it all the time. We get hit every night about three AM. Somebody from Asia hits us up with, hey, can you take? We would love to sell our bikes through your store, where you're a great fit. Um, thousand watt, fifteen hundred watt, we don't even, we don't even respond. We won't even consider it. We stay, we pride ourselves on the fact that we stay within the state federal, um, uh, laws. It's important. Yes, there are bikes that have, can go forty, forty-five miles an hour, and then that is absolutely crazy. Um, vice with a wheel, with a tire that that's that big. It's we won't even discuss it with anybody. We, we totally squash it because people ask us all the time, our tech, our, our service techs. The, um, let's see here. Oh, and bicycles need to, to yield to horses. First and foremost, I'm an equestrian rider and I ride trails. And, um, if you're riding a bike, you see a horse stop, please. It's no fun getting bucked off. There, I hope you're, you've come into our store to try out your, your, I did, didn't it? Thank you. We appreciate that very much. Um, there's some things where there's some, there, there's some, there's some letters from customers, actually their customer bars. Says throttle's bad, pedal's good. Throttle is not bad. Lucas explained, or yes, Lucas explained that and said, hey, you know, the disability side of things. Plus, it's just as we age into life. I mean, the demographic is, is me. You know, and so I, I appreciate the fact that I could have a little bit of a boost to get that back going, and I don't want to be redundant on that. Lewisville Cyclery, I think Greg is online, um, he texted me. We're competitors, we're friendly competitors, we get along great, we help each other wherever we can. Um, he doesn't sell a lot of the e-bikes in comparison to us. That's, we're exclusive to e-bikes. We have a hundred to a hundred and twenty bikes on our showroom floor for test rides, and we stock close to four hundred in our warehouse at any given time. So, um, we didn't plan to be that, but, but we are. Um, and it's, and, and I'm proud to say that, and I'm humbled to be that as well. Um, behavior is always the issue. And if we can help educate riders, young riders, we have it all the time. People ask us, where can we ride these bikes? How can we ride these bikes? But that's a different age group. When you asked me if we would put a QR code on our, absolutely, hundred percent, that's it's a, it's a prevention type of thing. We'll do anything like that to help educate. I am so proud of these young men that came in. They stopped at our store to go over. We have, we have a food truck now down there, and they went over to get some tacos, I believe Sarah said. And I went outside, they were sitting there and um, they, I appreciate them coming forward because, um, they were riding bikes that are in question here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thought I'd provide just a little insight from a different perspective, as a rider.
Can you speak up?
Yeah. Um, different perspective as a rider of e-bikes and, uh, e-bike, that just doesn't get, um. I thought this, the speed limit signs on trails, I know it's not like an enforcement thing as far as personnel or whatever. But I think it's also a good idea because I ride over to Wannik every now and then, just to look like, um, I think it's a good idea that, um, pedestrians and people walking can see the speed limit. And, you know, if they can see that we're riding that or less, then they'll be happy knowing that, um, higher ups have approved it and they'll be more happy, um, with us being there. And so I think that kind of helps based off trail population and moving, uh, that I know as far as compact, um, and the sidewalk. Thought I'd comment on that too. Me and my friends have been told, um, riding bike lane, maybe a little into the road, okay, because like, sometimes, um, we've been told by an officer to not be on the road and sidewalks. So I think we just get confused sometimes, whether there's, you know, people have different perspectives or whatever, whether we should be on the sidewalk, road, or bike lanes. Uh, we get kind of confused, you know, we never really try to be in the way or be a problem. And, uh, I might know what you're talking about with the school, because a lot of my friends, um, ride and it's, gets very populated when you get out of school, but thought of try to get some perspective on this. Kind of the view of, and some of my friends.
You may go online to.
Hello? Hi, yeah, this is Michael Kramer. I just had a, a question. Uh, some of these bikes that I've seen are not, uh, e-bikes at all. They're really, uh, e-dirt bikes. And they don't actually have pedals. Um, you can, you know, I've seen them, you can buy them on Amazon. Some of them are fifteen hundred watt motors. So I just, I wanted to know where those uh, kind of fall into this discussion because those go obviously extremely fast. And I, in my opinion, have no business on the sidewalk and, um, I don't know in terms of bike pads or whatever, where those fall in, but those are also out there. So I don't need the full three minutes, just that, that's really my only question is kind of where do those fit into this scenario? Um, because I've seen kids riding, you know, mini dirt bikes in my neighborhood and, and then like, almost like full size. Uh, but they're, you know, electric, but they're still, you know, at that point, basically a motorcycle.
And you don't have to wear your helmet.
My name's Max Clark. So I had a Super Seventy-three, which is a class two e-bike with pedals and a throttle. And me and my friends, we were riding down Main Street, like on the side of the street. And a cop came by and he told us that we needed to get out of the street and go onto the sidewalk, otherwise he would cite us. So we have to go on the sidewalk. So it is kind of a confusing topic as Tori was talking about for all of us teens, because we've never really been given an insight on where we should ride the e-bikes and, uh, on sidewalks or roads. That's really it.
Yeah, it's kind of like catching.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you have the thought?
I was just gonna say.
Gonna follow the rules on this.
Um, just going off on that. People, cars will get really mad at you if you wreck them. Um, I remember once I was riding on the road. Just over there though, I was riding up the road. Um, and there is a car behind me, and I was just riding on the side, and they got really mad. Just kind of aggressively cut me off and flipped me off. And then, uh, then I've ridden, ridden on the sidewalks. And people on the sidewalks would get mad at you, you know, so, so there's not really, it's conflicting. So I believe a lot of people are supposed to. But then other vehicles are really mad at you. So maybe, um, just a topic.
Thank you, thank you.
For problem, it goes along so long and then think, oh, I could say something. Sherry Summer, well, um, I really thank you, Mr. Creancy, for offering to educate people. And the police department's been doing really, so creative, like I just love that energy. Would you, I wonder if it would be possible with every e-bike seller to offer a service, which is, hey, we're gonna give you ten hours of practice or something. Because when I see kids riding e-bikes, it's not like they're trying to do their own thing, they just don't have the muscle memory, I think. And, and, I mean, that's what we get in driver's training, so, I think you.
Thanks, sure.
May I go online first? I'll be right back. Um, Leslie Jones, online?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, it's actually Gregory Jones. And my address is eighteen oh nine Sweet Clover. I'm also the owner of Lewisville Cyclery. Um, so kind of listening to this and, and reading social media posts and, and, um, hearing people come into the store and kind of what's going on. Um, and actually listening to these kids that just, just spoke a few minutes ago, it's, it is kind of an interesting dynamic that we're dealing with. And it does seem to me that there's some pretty simple solutions by letting kids know if, which it appears to be most of the problem that people are, are, are bringing up is, it seems to be younger people. Is to let them know, hey, you know, this is, this is what you're supposed to do and, um, this is how you should do it. And I don't think we have to cite people and and, uh, make a, a bigger deal out of it than it, than it, you know, needs to become, I guess. Um, there is a lot of confusion, it appears, about the classifications of bikes and um, and what that means for individuals, um, buying them and where they can ride them. Now, that's true on the trails, also with mountain bikes, also on the roads. You know, Randy, uh, E-Bikes of Colorado and I have spoken numerous times and will continue to try and educate people as we sell them bikes or uh, talk to them about e-bikes. Uh, but there's bikes being purchased through a lot of, um, a lot of channels that we obviously don't have any control over, uh, but we'll continue to work on that, both of us, I'm sure. And, uh, happy to do that together as well. But, uh, yeah, I just, I feel like there is some easy solutions. I know when I was a kid, um, you know, I, I rode a BMX bike, I jumped all over the place, did everything. And if I was doing something wrong, if a police officer just gave me a little nod and said, hey, you know, you shouldn't be, shouldn't be riding the wrong way down the road or jumping your bike into the middle of the road or doing whatever I was doing. I would have stopped doing it. And I think, uh, most of these kids would be the same way. They get a, a heads up of what they're not supposed to do. I think they'll stop doing it. Um, I happen to be at the intersection of South Boulder Road in Maine. And, uh, that is a very dangerous intersection and one that we see a lot of e-bikes come across and, and a lot of close calls at that intersection. So I hope that we can continue trying to, to educate people and, and, um, and make it better for everybody. So that's my time. Appreciate it.
Um, so my dad, he grew up in Iowa and he, when he was, um, below the age he could get his permit to drive, he got a moped and he, um, took a course and he got a moped license when he was under the driving age, the age that he could drive. And I think that could be a possible solution, kids on e-bikes. Because li- like, I can't remember who said it, I think a lot of people have said it. It's the behavior and that we're doing, and we don't know what to do. We don't know the road laws, the traffic laws. So I think what would be helpful is if you get a class two or class three e-bike or class one, you have to take, and you're under sixteen. You have to take a course and get a permit or a license to drive that e-bike on the road or in the bike.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Keith Rice. Want to thank those young folks for coming in and participating in the process. It's very important that you guys came here. You all were very well spoken. I especially want to thank Quentin for bringing up mopeds, which I thought only people of a certain age and that's actually what I was thinking about over there. That this isn't a new problem. It's just a new technology and technology is always going to lead regulation. They're get out in front of us, we don't know how to handle it, it gets in people's use. And then we have, we have to react and decide, well, what's acceptable in our society, what's not acceptable? How do we want to live? What do we want it to look like? What do the users actually need? A lot of their complaints are very similar to road riders and mountain bikers in our communities. And I think as, want to applaud that this group is coming together to have this conversation before something really tragic does happen. Because we do need to get our hands around this technology and it's super fun. They're great tools, they open up space. I see these guys riding all over miles and miles, their ability to explore and not be on screens is amazing. So thank you for having it. I hope this comes into something meaningful and that we're able to put all of the different user groups or whatever the right way to say that is, together to come up with meaningful solutions. Unfortunately, there are going to be penalties to some of the behavior. So I hope everybody understands that. So thank you.
Anyone online? Anybody else? Who hasn't spoken, like to speak?
I am Kevin Berry, but you have a kind of Colorado over here. I was just gonna continue on with some of the, this is points that he didn't quite get to finish up and uh, hopefully broaden the definitions of e-bikes and especially some of the stuff that we sell here as well. Um, there are definitely bikes that exist out there that are, that are, and people are rounding out the streets here that we would never consider e-bikes. Stuff over seven hundred and fifty watts power, stuff that we would even consider like an OHV or a dirt bike. Um, we want to make it clear that we want to differentiate those between the e-bikes we sell, um, and even normal bicycles. Which I think should all be in that same kind of classification of how they get regulated and how they're treated in the city and how they're treated by even other vehicles on the road as well. Um, it's definitely like a two-way street in terms of the behavior of uh, the people on the e-bikes as well as the people on, or inside the cars, we're acting with those bikes out on the road, um, at all times and it's a two-way street of those behaviors. It's, you know, keeping e-bikers when they're out there, on the streets, um, riding, making sure that they're cordial on how they ride and how they operate on the road. on how they ride and how they operate on the road, and also informing the drivers. This is what's happening, this is what these bikers are allowed to do out on the road, um, and giving them their right of way. And everybody actually being important to each other and hopefully making a safer community for all these various rights.
Can you just clarify one acronym used, OHV?
Oh, HB, um, it's like, it's an off highway vehicle, so it's anything considered like a motorcycle, an electric dirt bike. Um, there are things non-registered, so they're not like registered vehicle, um, like four-wheelers, those various types of vehicles. And people do ride them in the road, I see illegally at some points, to my knowledge. And those are personal, there are electric variants, that's simply that classification.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any others? Who knows? Everybody online? Wow. I, I, I need to call out the kids who came tonight, I, this is really impressive that you showed. I was really hoping people who can use e-bikes and have more experience than probably the rest of us, or most of the rest of us, were coming to this. So you did, of course, and I really appreciate that. And all you well-spoken too, which I, and we talked at the very beginning a little bit about the stability of this, and it's not always true that the adults are that, so for you guys, I told you that it's easier to get younger people to follow the rules sometimes than it is to get the adults to follow the rules, but I really do appreciate that. And so I want you to know that. And if your parents, friends are not here tonight, go home and tell them that we said. And I hope that, one of the things that we're gonna do, and we talked about this at the beginning, is that we're doing discussions, there probably will, there will be a follow-up. And keep an eye out for that, um, you can get e-notifications. We can maybe go online on the city's website, you can get notified. Meetings, and hopefully be back to comment on what presents to us. Ideas, so thanks. So I, this is, uh, you know, I'm kind of tempted to walk through, you know, the three Ds, but I, I really do, I want to bear down for into what sorts of problems we're really trying to and really make sure that we're perfectly with step. What problems we see, what problems we really don't. Because I think you've heard. Why don't we start there, and then maybe we can turn to some of the potential solutions. One, one of the things that I think is gonna be really easy to do is to get very, very granular. And we don't probably need to do that because I think staff will be able to take what we do and probably put it in that form. To some extent, you know, when we're talking about speed limits, that's pretty good anyway. So it may not be as easy to stay away from that, but I, I think there's some pretty big sort of policy areas that we, we really need to describe. To be clear about, and getting the problem right here. Very, so, yes.
Thank you, um, and that's actually your perspective, I almost wanted to ask you guys questions, which is um, so, I didn't, so I, I, I think we've got two things to talk about, which is, there's like open space trail, even use, and there's street. And I think what we're gonna do may not work the same for both. We're probably not gonna be putting additional speed limit signs on roads or sidewalks for kids, but I, I and when the people riding the e-bikes are saying we like the idea, and it's, and the perspective, which I hadn't thought of, just wanted this, um, that as a walker, let's say, you can see that that e-bike person, although that felt fast, really wasn't, is comforting to know, oh, I guess they are going, that's really smart, because then they're not yelling at somebody who's doing it, it's not just for the e-bike. So that was a really, I thought, amazing, like, insight, good point. Is there also a way, as we're looking at tailoring this? It does sound like the kids have good ideas on what they would like to know or learn, or what they think would make it safer. Is there a way to involve, to like do some kind of engagement with them before we come up with ideas to us? It just seems, and especially at the middle school and maybe high school level, because they're really gonna be able to articulate what can help. If it's possible, I think that, that, that makes a lot more sense than asking people like me. What would you think would, would. I wasn't actually, but you know what, it's not a bad idea. Um, especially if they can actually engage with other students, like have other kids come and ride a lot of e-bikes. And use, especially kids I think are using it commuting, getting as like their main mode of transportation to school. I was also hoping to get one point of clarification. I wanted to figure out, I thought there was an e-bike, and I don't remember if it was a class two or three, that and the gentleman worked the e-bike store, and they told me, because they told me this, that there's one that you don't need to pedal. You can, like, if your, like, knees are hurting or whatever, and you're injured, you want to use like, you can just put it, and if the motor is not in the pedal component, it's in like the rear gear, and I was hoping first, can we, I don't know, could you guys compare?
I think that's class two.
That is a class two, okay, so it does not require pedal assist. It's only, but a, but a class three that can go faster has to have a pedal assist?
That was correct, yes.
Okay. So it's interesting, if the faster bike, that, wow, that is very counterintuitive, very confusing. There might be tweaking at the state legislature. The definitions, because that's one thing to me, it's like, if you're not actually pedaling it, you're just kicking it on to the point of people comparing these to boatheads, right, a motorized bicycle. If you're not pedaling it, how is it bicycle? And how are you controlling your speed as well, like, a- as easily at twenty miles an hour when your feet maybe are just resting on the pedals, you're not actually using them, there's, curious about that. Yeah, I, I just wanted to, like, engage the kids, thank them for actually even being here and doing this.
Yes, remember to.
You were. Yeah, I think, you know, there's, we talk about the three Ds, right, education enforcement and, and engineering. You know, I think that I, I do think enforcement, in some way, not saying, you know, arresting in handcuffs kind of enforcement, which I think is what gets people kind of worried, is this like heavy-handed enforcement versus just simple enforcement. And so, you know, couple I grew up on the hill in Boulder, and on the way to Baseline Elementary School, which doesn't exist anymore, my brothers and I would ride our skateboards like bougies, you know, just lie down, and we'd go straight down as fast as we could, and there were several stop signs. We just went right to it, and almost died several times. That's a skateboard, there's nothing about electric e-bikes, bicycles, or skateboards that are, as we talk about, the exact part of the problem, right? But the concern of those people driving by was not like, these kids suck. It was like, oh my god, I almost killed a kid. And so, you know, what I hear from the public all the time is, is less, there is some frustration with the behavior of the kids being like rowdy and silly and disrespectful, but where I hear the most emotion, most panic, and so to your question, Mayor, what are we trying to solve? Is what I hear all the time, and I've experienced it myself multiple times. Is this hard my throat, oh my god, I just, I almost just killed a kid. And I, I haven't, I haven't even hit him. Um, but I'm driving down Spruce, and on the far edge, they just come right through as if there's no stop sign, and I brake because I'm only going twenty miles an hour. Um, happens to be just kind of where I am in that moment, so I'm only going probably twenty, and I brake, and they go flying by, and I'm like, oh my god, and then the next thing that happens to me is like, that little piece of wood, and I get so angry at that kid. But I'm not actually angry at the kid, I'm so scared about what I must did. Um, and so I think what we're trying to figure out is, gosh, how do you solve that? There is a stop sign. So like, we need stop signs, then there's a stop sign, and they're supposed to stop. And they've been kids for a long time, and they know how to cross the street, they know what stop signs are. They're choosing not to stop at a stop sign because, one, they want to keep their speed up, and two, there's probably not a car coming. But that behavior needs to be, you know, I'm not gonna whip a right and go follow the kid and, you know, chase him down. And there's not gonna be a police au- officer at every corner, right? But certainly when we observe that behavior, that kid needs to be pulled over, spoken to, and dealt with appropriately, right, on those kind of things, but, but if we have a rule about comments from sixteen to eighteen, but no one's ever gonna get cited for it, that's good, I mean, at least the parent can point to, there's a rule. But, you know, there's gotta be some consequences for not doing it, or, hey, hon, there's a rule, you cannot have this bike until you're sixteen. Hey, there's a rule, you cannot ride a bike like this until you pass this class, you gotta take this class, like, it's just part of the game. And, you know, my kid just turned sixteen, they did everything they needed to do to get a driver's license. Right, and you want to ride an e-bike, that's awesome, here's everything you need to do. And not having those set up, I think, is a miss, not having, because that is where you force education. So that first E, I think we need to absolutely force education on our younger population, we have this assumption, twenty-five-year-olds, thirty-year-olds, they know the rules, and, and education isn't maybe at the same level, but younger kids that don't have a driver's license, haven't gone through all that for, that they haven't needed to, right? Thirteen years old, to not have any kind of license program, like a fishing license, hunting license, but, but we, I mean, you need a license to, to ref soccer. You should have a license, some kind, to, to be able to ride those bikes. Um, and I don't think that's too big of a barrier to entry, and then that really helps us with E, sorry, with the education part of E is, is force and education. And again, parenting is so fine, if I can give it to the kid and put him out there and never have him get certified, right? That's a parent's choice, uh, but at least we're setting up those rules. And when we talk to kids, like, you know, I need to get your, you know, information on your license, and go, I never got it. Oh, well, that's a hundred dollar fine, you know, whatever the, so the consequences, right, so I think that's especially important. There are a lot of other people, I'm sure, want to talk about steps, all, the only other thing I'll talk about is engineering, so you've heard our team back there, but like, if we had, I mean, so, you know, we say like, yeah, we don't, you know, there's not a whole lot of guidance. I think of, when I go to big cities, whether it's New York, or Paris, Denver, or even Boulder, the line infrastructure of those places that have been kind of forced to this, God, there's lines all over the place. Very similar to a class two, right, throttle, go, I don't know about speed, but it's very similar to a class two. And when you have a protected bike way and a sidewalk and a road, those conflicts are only at the intersections, right? And so I, I rode a line, felt like twenty miles an hour, fifteen miles an hour, down a New York street, and I felt totally fine because I was in a bike lane with bike stoplights, right? Literally, stoplights just for the bicycles. And there's a sidewalk fifteen feet to my left, and a road five feet to my right. And so, we don't have that infrastructure here. But to pretend that engineering is like, it kind of feels like the last year, like, yeah, there's not a whole lot we can do. And I think that's the biggest role the council can have, is that we say like, bike paths need to be enhanced over the next ten years, because ten years from now, think about how many e-bikes, think about how many people are trading in their second car for these commuter bikes that they can go anywhere, right? Um, and if we, it's gonna take a long time to get our roads and bike paths and all those things up to a level where it's super comfortable for people to get through our town on an e-bike or regular bicycle, I'll get to share that, I would imagine. So I, I love a thing, you know, Councilmember Hamilton is very good at like not trying to, from this moment, be like, so this is how you should do it, right, Kurt, this is my idea. It's like, no, you guys are the experts. There's so many examples out there, but what I would want to say from a council perspective of offering potential direction for us is, I want to up our game on protected and otherwise substantial bike paths through our town. On every major road and on every major path that like, if it's widening our current paths, and if it's, you know, different paint color, I don't know, if it's additional stop signs, I don't know, this is the detailed stuff of like, I, I don't know, I don't know what works, I don't know what's best. But, but I think really saying, you know, e-bikes here, bicycles are here, and we want that, we want to trade in five hundred vehicles for five hundred bicycles, that would be amazing. And for parking and for, and for pollution and for all those things, right? So I'm, I'm really excited about solving one of our major problems with this, which is the safety of the children, but also amping up and ramping up our, our e-bike infrastructure in this town, so that it makes a ton of sense to trade in your car for an e-bike, and get your family around that way. So that would be, I don't, I don't know what we can do, you know, tonight in that direction, but I definitely want, I and I'm just one of seven to start the conversation heading in more and more and more in that direction of welcoming and, and figuring out how to coordinate the e-bikes into our, into our existence.
Who's next? Just want to make sure.
Okay. So I'll, I agree with, I'm gonna follow what Caleb said. Hey, do you think, like, question earlier about collaboration, that the jurisdictions is important, make those calls and figure out what's going on? So it's sort of a illustrative story, uh, we rode e-bikes from Louisville to Boulder to go to Freak Fest Saturday. And when you enter Boulder, the infrastructure changes, right, all of a sudden, there's painted bike lanes on the multi-use path, right, in a directional, and there's a painted pedestrian lane, and I, you know, I don't know if that makes sense here. But maybe it's something to look at, what's the sort of Louisville scale bike lanes on the, on the bike path solution? There are engineering standards out there, Boulder has a fifteen mile speed limit for bikes, it's posted. Um, I don't know whether they enforce that, I don't know if they have. Or not, but, um, they do have the standard, and I'd be curious to sort of see how they, how they approach that. To me, the biggest piece is education, is we're doing the normal setting. I think there's two, two additional things I can say. One is, you have, you have great momentum going, right? You described. Let's keep that momentum and see if we can't get it to middle school, high school. That's probably, it's probably the best return of standards are. Part two is, we probably ought to learn to do updating our code. Make sure we're all clear about what standards are, I think there is some confusion about sidewalks, bike lanes, um, and what's class three and what's class two. Um, whatever we decide, I would hope that we revisit our code, make it super clear, make sure the city website is super clear, such that we're asking people to do something that, that at least, you know, we're being clear and consistent about what it is to do. And the last thing I want to say is just, whatever sort of comes back. Let's not lose track, putting peace, people with disabilities, older people. People who, you know, say the class two e-bike is really necessary to be able to ride at all, um, versus, you know, like you're a teenager, for whom it's, you know, probably more of a luxury, and they would do finance, be cruiser bike, but you know, have, have this thing, um, and making this, the stations, making sure we're accommodating, because I, one of the, one of the great things, I think you heard this, that, that changed that exactly. Is e-bikes are allowing people to get out. When it, otherwise, that's terrific, we should encourage it, we should enable it, it should be an experience for everyone. Four people on bikes coming cars. So, thanks, thanks.
High-handling broach.
Thank you, yes, I agree with everything that's already been said. I think it's really important to do the education portion of this. But I will reiterate that I think it's important not just to educate the e-bike riders, but also the automotive drivers. I know I was a passenger in a car, um, driving through, I think it was up on Washington, I'm not sure. And there was a biker that came in front of us, and they complained that the bikers riding down the street right in front of them, and right there was a sign that said bikers have full access to the right lane. And so I pointed it out, it's like, they have the right to be there, but a lot of drivers don't. And so that would maybe help if we had, especially on Main Street, by LMS. Bikers have the right to be in the right-hand lane of the street. And they did the driver's license in California. So I just think that's really important thing to educate automobile drivers as well. Also, I just read somewhere that. Um, there's a proposal involved by someone that they were going to start. Allowing. Luxury golf carts on the paths.
Thank you.
There's another issue.
One problem.
That's how you. Yes.
Are you proposing to add the? Golf carts is the whole problem here.
No, 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 not now. Wait. Just love it.
So I'll I'll add the education pedestrians as well. It really was disheartening to me to hear the stories of. E-bike users who wanna follow the rules, think they're doing the right thing, but then are only receiving that those. Behaviors that. Um, are in danger. So I I I support the whole encompassing education model. I will add to that, you know, I think there's this whole online retailer piece. We have some really, really great expert dealers. Tell Britney bikes do the right thing. But um, that doesn't necessarily encompass the online retailers who have these bikes. Though, taking the speed, so. No solution, just stating the problem there. Um, as far as worse like those, you know. The past few months, I have been chatting with parents around town and a common thing that I've heard is. If so-and-so's parent. How they were operating their e-bike down the street or sidewalk, they would not have. So I think this connection, whether it's not just situations, but also the educational opportunities, like how do we make sure? Um, that the responsible adult is. Of that um contact that was made um that day, so that. We can keep our kids safe. I think you guys pretty much. Mentioned everything else that I was going to.
This is, this is really helpful. Things I I think the problem, I I want to go back to something that Mary Pretend said, because. Um, what? Well, the problem is not. Is, it's not a problem to me. So to the extent that people were waiting for us to say, that's the problem. We need to get rid of those e-bikes. Well, that that's not going to happen. Uh, regardless, the. The horse has left the barn, or the e-bike has left. E-bikes have a lot of work. I believe on two. But more importantly, that we've got to somehow manage. The, the situation that we have. And I think the kinds. I mean, what we, one problem we want to avoid is to somehow discourage. The use of what is a technology that our own police are going to adopt for some of the work that they do. And that's important. It's a technology which I see as. Part of the long-term solution to how people get to Louisville to work, to show. Maybe to recreate a little bit. And it may ultimately, it is easier in many ways than trying. And it's a lot better for the. And I mean, there's a host of reasons. So I think some ways it's kind of negative space. It's like. We want to avoid. Um, and not create a problem by. What we can, you know. The the bottom line is we want to keep you safe. On the roadways. We want to reduce the number of conflicts. It sounds like there's there's behavioral conflicts at times. But there are. Places where conflicts are. More likely, less likely. I don't know where those are, those, those places. I think are worth focusing on. Clearly, one of the problems is that there's confusion about standards. I think, and that's another something we could do. I I think Councilmember Heffner's comment about. Getting ourselves squared with some other jurisdictions is a good thing. I think getting our laws, state law. And knowing what we can do. In addition to that, I'll get to that moment. There really, I mean, the. The thing that I have been thinking about most, and I thought about this. E-bike. This weekend is just how. Big this set of changes. Could be, and is this, it it just spoke to me in the way that other things really. Of the. Of multimodal transportation. Because that may be one of the biggest contributors. I mean, we're not likely to get a train anytime soon. Cars are increasingly challenging. In many ways, and I'm not sure people are going to. To solve their. Issues over plenty of people. Do do that together. So I think it's a big thing to be. Um, on education, there have been discussions. When to sell. I have no. We can make. Global, so. Um, and I appreciate hearing them. I I think it is, it is a challenge when you've got. People buying online, because a lot of people. Mine. Put things together, they go out, they know. And who knows? Um, but. They don't have any, anything. Necessarily systematic to. I think another thing, and so that, you know, that's the education. I think recognizing there are different audiences. For the education is something that's come out. There's, and it's not just. E-bikers, it's, and that's not just pedestrians, it's people with cars, it's. Just groups of people. People who deal with you. There's a lot of people. Lot of ways in to to you. Groups in churches. Soccer. Leagues and all, you know, there's a whole bunch of ways I think that that information gets disseminated. And I hope. That that is part of the solution too. I know, Chief, that you you're really good at helping the community and even breathe. And bring. The. Community piece, I think that's really important here, getting the user's report, I think that's. You know, potentially. Enforcement, a couple of other things, maybe specific, more specific things on enforcement, size clarifying standards. Seems to me that. And maybe it goes for. I don't believe they. The effects. But if, I would be all for. Against racing, because I know that that's. And it really scared the. Scared that some people will be. A lot. The kids are doing that. And it was kids. But it means kids, it could mean anybody. I'll get strung up, but. You know, I wish we had our own helmet. Kids particularly. I just think it's. And it gets really scary because kids are missed. And others are too. Kids. It's. Not quite fully borned. I think from a policing standpoint, what I've heard from almost everybody. Touch. Gee, I've heard that from you, I think other people have spoken to that, nobody wants to. I, the other piece on the enforcement, I think, is, I I still wish we can. We could have one rule. That that was. Cover all of you. About where. Wish it wouldn't be. Um, because I think that, to me, that's the. It's not the most dangerous place, it sounds like. I know that what the kid said was. And getting mad at them. Probably more dangerous. In some ways, it's more dangerous to be in the street. At some point, if everybody's following the rules, knows that the rules are. Which we need to assume what they're going to do, so it's clear. Just seems like that's. But sort of just the kids are already in groups or other adults are. On the street in bike lanes. A couple of other things, just, those are. My ideas and sorts, I think some of the others, but. You know, what I, what I've heard is. You know, to try to. Be especially cognizant of accommodating. The technology. Accommodating older people disabled, keeping that money, because that's huge for getting people into the. We discourage groups of people getting into the out. Shouldn't do it. People who do parts directly, you know, which is. Or legacy. That's a great thing. Um, the safety, and we've talked about. Stimage, I mean, I heard a number of people talk about signage as being helpful. And that should be something. We give a thought to, that's a generic issue. Mary Pretend talked about thinking carefully about infrastructure, general. Really supportive. I don't know what this. Maybe, but. Educating people about. I mean, education, education, education. Is for. For time. Anyhow, those are, that's sort of what I tempered. Kind of. Ideas that we put less around. Are there, are there others that? Missed and distracting?
I just want to um add one more detail to the comment about. E-bikes sidewalks. I would say overall. Given speeds and such, you know, directing traffic to the road appropriately. The only caveat I'll add is I'm thinking of. Parents teaching their young kids. All parents e-bike, and how do they safely teach that five-year-old? Sidewalk and be with them as well. So. I know I'm getting in the weeds, but when we think about. These sorts of topics, like, how do we think? How do we encompass the users? And that's one important talent, I want to just remember, it's. These fabulous kids are here today. We also have a whole other demographic of young kids in bikes. Uh, what do you?
Yeah, I think, I was having a similar thought that. My nine-year-old. Rides their bike to school every morning. They're not, not tow on the road from their parents. Like, now, they don't have an e-bike. But just biking in general, they don't, I can see my kid. At nine years old has nearly the understanding of car traffic to be there. So it's just like a faster way of walking, but they have to scooter or bike on the sidewalk. Whereas my sixteen-year-old. I'm fine with them biking on the road, right? Um, and my nine-year-old will bike the road with me if I so choose, and I'll bring them along, you know, on my right hip. On the road and teaching them. Little by little, but I think that it would be. I would be concerned if we were to. Kind of have any rule that push bikes off the sidewalk. I think again, it's, it's, it's just tough, right? It's, it's um. Cars have to be kind to bikes because they can run them over. And bikes need to be kind to pedestrians because they can run them over. And so, you know, thinking about which one are you, and this is great, these things are great when they kind of show that. Difference of like, hey, bikers respect runners, runners respect walkers, right? Um, you're all moving in different speeds and you need to be thoughtful of it. And um. And again, just, I was down in Boulder for the Boulder Boulder, and I was on a line getting from. The hill to the starting spot and try and navigate when I should be on a sidewalk, when I should be on a bike path, when I should be in the road. And I have all my knowledge, and there's construction and the sidewalk is gone. And like, I guess I'll merge into just full-on traffic. And then back to it, and then like, it's really complicated, but it goes back to the infrastructure piece and and all of us trying to work together to. Be kind to each other and try to figure out how to how to do all of this together. Um, but I think Chris said it really well, Mary said it really well, that, you know. We are not against e-bikes. Certainly, I'm not against e-bikes. It's about how to, how to have them perform well and and integrate with our other traffic well. Um, and not not demonize, one of the words I wrote down is just like, not demonizing the e-bikes for the conflict. Um, but certainly there are irresponsible e-bike riders, irresponsible drivers. Uh, unfriendly pedestrians, all those things exist, but you know, in the norms, how are we navigating together and doing that well? But. Yeah, I'm excited. Louisville's gonna be the e-bike capital of war.
I, I actually agree too, that I think.
You agree to that?
Well, hopefully it'll be the golf cart capital. Because I'll tell you, I feel a whole lot safer in a really cool golf cart than I do on an e-bike. Because I am not twenty-five anymore.
And your comment about e-bikes.
So I do think that the sidewalks um need to be a place for bicycles. Uh, especially bicycles at the John Drive Fest. I think we need to think of three roads, Dillon, McCaslin, South Boulder. I personally would never ride my bicycle on any of those three roads. I don't feel that it's safe for me. Um, and I spent my life riding a bicycle everywhere as my main mode of transportation. I would definitely not let a nine-year-old. Or a sixteen-year-old ride on any of the three. If we stop ourselves and we don't even have a sidewalk on Dillon. Um, but if we say that we can't do that, and maybe this comes to the speed limit thing, I don't know, of saying it's like, maybe ten miles an hour on a sidewalk. So if you want to be an e-biker at twenty miles an hour and you feel confident in doing that, ride in the road, i- in the bike. And we have bike, so we're probably going to have to, to the point of um, Councilmember Dickinson's comment on infrastructure. Improving the bike lanes on those three main roads, we've been adding one to Dillon because we don't have it. You know, adding a good six-foot bike lane with the buffers to add that infrastructure for not to do the trails well on those roads. I think we, I like the idea that. People who aren't driving an e-bike at twenty miles an hour, a senior who's trying to get up the hill on South Boulder or McCaslin specifically, would be nice if they.
Others, let's, let's focus on the issue.
Other folks have to say. Yeah, I I'm in agreement. I I look at the right on the. They need to be able to, I I think it's in our current code, though, like, sidewalk downtown, it's this district.
And at the risk of being. And it comes from. Having grown up in a small town. Rural co. Um, where people. On. But that's just, you know, I've got to be careful because that's my, my. Yeah, I guess it was my choice. It's sort of my parents' fault. Choosing for me to do it in a different place. But um. I. I absolutely agree. I mean, little kids particularly, I think everybody could. Yeah, I can agree that. That. A little kid, particularly somebody who's, who's accompanied by. Parents. Um, being on a sidewalk. Since, and maybe up to a certain age, maybe. Um, I'm not sure, I share the idea of having e-bikes. You know, past a certain age, I mean. Concept of having, okay, if you're a sixteen-year-old e-bike. Would be good to be on the street. I don't know what difference. You know, what place is, sweet spot, if there is one. Um, I do know, for the sake of these folks back in back of us, we need to have some clean and clear rules. And. So if we're gonna have. You know, I mean, if we're gonna say. No, you know, e-bikes. E-bikes need to be on, or. If you ought to be able to ride your e-bike on the. Sidewalk, we have to be clear about that, and we ought to enforce that, and we have to educate people to that. And if what we're saying is only, no. Just little kids, just kids up to fourteen, sixteen, whatever, we don't have, and be clear about that. And I don't know when kids these days start. I don't know when kids these days start. Eight, but that's just me. Um, and and I realize people. Yeah. We did. Um, so, which is another story, but but I do think that having staff think about that a little bit more. Um. I mean, if the general consensus is. We want e-bikes always be able to ride on sidewalks. Then that's what we do. I think it would be really interesting to know whether that's a good policy to choice or not, maybe people enforcing it. I'd have to say so about that and. You know, maybe there's data. Yeah, Councilmember.
I was just thinking upon the lines of. Riding on the street versus the sidewalk. If they're riding in the street. They have to be no more than two abreast, right?
Yes.
And could we say on the sidewalk, they have to be single file?
You could say anything you want to, I think when the rules get. Let's keep track of them, but that's that's possible, for sure.
Well, that would allow for pedestrian, you could meet somebody.
Certainly possible.
Yeah, I mean. My initial reaction is that I think to bring this back, you started this whole conversation for safety. And I don't think safety is necessarily defined by the age of the user, I really think it's defined by other metrics. Which could be speed, is it a business, just like, there's a lot of pedestrians. Who all are the experts to figure that out, but I personally don't think age should be the defining factor in this. Uh, so I just wanted to totally sure to clarify that.
My question at this point, Councilmember.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think again, for me, it goes back to infrastructure, I think if you have really good bike paths on the road. Then you say, well. Get off the side, the sidewalks are for pedestrians because we have such a good protected bike. And short of having a protected bike path. I think you have to allow for users to be comfortable on a sidewalk. And so again, the specific rules on like when you have speed limits on sidewalks or single file on sidewalks, I love that idea. Or otherwise, age restrictions, you know, I maybe don't love as much, but. Saying yes, bike, bikes are allowed on, we don't need to, you know, overdo this, like, bikes are allowed on streets, they're allowed on sidewalks, but what is appropriate behavior? And expected behavior of a bike on a sidewalk. Yielding to pedestrians that are sharing that with you, right? Um, whereas we know pedestrians aren't supposed to walk on the road. Right, and so um. Like there are sort of rules, but a pedestrian can certainly cross them. Then come out of the road again, the car, really, yeah, these are things, right? So a bike can be on a sidewalk, a bike can be on a road, when a bike is on a sidewalk, it behaves like this, when a bike is on a road, it behaves like this. And this is how a bike and a pedestrian interact on a sidewalk, this is how a car and a bike interact on a on a street. These are the guidelines and rules that we want to have, and so we're not going to get through all those details in a meeting like this. But but I do think that like, it's not about allowing or disallowing. Bicycles, electric or not, on sidewalks, it's about. Yeah, how like that that story from the mom of, you know, four, three or four bikes taking up the entire sidewalk and. And physically basically pushing them out of the. Out of the sidewalk is a problem, right? And that would be like, oh, yeah, you're not allowed, yeah, we could point to it already and say. That's not okay behavior. Um, but what rule you're pointing to, you should be single file on bikes on the sidewalk. Um, or yield to pedestrians. And that is, that is. Yield to pedestrians?
Yeah.
On sidewalks. Yeah. So it's like they're doing it wrong, you know, so I think trying to figure out. Yeah, how to enforce that. You get a lot of enforcement in about ten minutes. Then eight thirty. And then. I feel like twenty minutes a day, you know, all your.
I I think the question that from our perspective, our app has given us. Direction. To be able to bring back some. I do, I, yeah. And are you going to make sure that? E bikes yield to horses?
Definitely. Yes. We could have a hybrid, yes.
Um, one one last thing, and then we can um. Turn. Um. Public, I'm I'm just. Just. Um, if you have additional thoughts based on what we just think, I bet, you know, you. Wouldn't you get up and refute what we. Add to it, would you please write to us? And write, or write to the chief? Because, or both of us, for that matter. And provide your thoughts, because this is, this is a process, and the more we have people who really care and are knowledgeable in thinking about this. And are maybe worried about the safety or just worried about. Being able to do what they're. To that. Right? Motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, I just want to make, I do want to appreciate the young gentleman in the back coming tonight and and providing feedback. I was talking with Scott, and we would actually like to engage with your group and get some ideas from your perspective, so after the meeting, if you want to just. Kind of meet up with us and see what we can make, or you and your friends, and again, we want to make sure that we're. We're engaging all stakeholders and users to try and find.
Um, motion to adjourn. Favor.